Thank you. Could we all stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the flag, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He was ringing here. Consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any additions?
No changes.
No changes?
I move for approval.
Second.
All right. Call for the vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to old business. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held until December 16th, 2010.
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item three, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0101215, closure and abandonment of an undeveloped alley right-of-way located between Byrne and Lee Avenues through parcel seven on map 40G, group C, and declaring it as surplus. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the alley locations to pick it up on the screen. At the October 7th meeting of the council, a request from the director of the Water Quality Control Department was approved to initiate the closure and abandonment of this alley. The purpose of the closure and abandonment is to allow the exchange of the alley right-of-way for a utility easement necessary for a sewer construction project near the Burton Estates subdivision. Here's an aerial view of the alley. The procedure for closure and abandonment of streets and right-of-ways is specified in Title 16, Chapter 4 of the municipal code. Section 16403 provides that the council may initiate the closure and abandonment of a street right-of-way, and section 16411 provides that the conveyance of other property acceptable to the city may be made in lieu of the required payment. The right-of-way of the undeveloped alley is approximately 12 feet in width and is approximately 308 feet in total length. One property, which is parcel seven, tax map 40G, group C, owned by Shirley Gahl Family Partnership, is contiguous on both sides of the alley right-of-way. Mr. Gahl submitted documentation indicating that he approves the closure and abandonment, and his family owns the property on which the sewer line easement is located. This has been reviewed by city departments. There are no utilities located within the right-of-way. The planning commission recommended for approval of closure and abandonment and conveyance to the adjoining property owner in exchange for the property identified by the Water Quality Control Department as necessary for the sewer construction project, subject to compliance with the municipal code. The planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion from the council?
No.
Any questions? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, ask for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, on to item four. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 101216, rezoning 580 and 600, Cora Road from MS, which is Medical Services, to RD, single-family and duplex residential. Sponsor, Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, the location of this property is on the screen. This proposed rezoning was initiated by Laurel Hill Properties LLC, the owners of the property at 600 Cora Road, which is the northernmost parcel there. The property at 600 Cora Road is contiguous with MS zoning. Let me go ahead to the zoning map here. I'll come back to the aerial map. Here's the current zoning of there. It's contiguous with MS zoning to the south and with unincorporated and unzoned properties on all other sides. A large area on the eastern side of Cora Road is currently zoned as RD. This area in here is what I'm referring to. The property consists of approximately 6.7 acres and is undeveloped. The petitioner indicated in the rezoning application that the purpose of the request was to allow for the residential development of the property. The future land use plan from the Cookville 2030 Plan identifies the property as being best suited for a lower-density residential development. The subject property, including an additional 2.12 acres to the south, was zoned as MS when it was annexed in 2002. The MS zoning was allowed, was approved to allow the construction of an assisted living facility, and the assisted living facility was constructed on the 2.1 acre tract, which is parcel 6302 on map 39. The planning department has recommended, and the planning commission has also recommended, that this property be included in the rezoning. This is partially due because of the size of the property. If we leave it as a 2.1 acre tract, that gives the appearance of a spot zone. Also, the existing use will be classified as legal nonconforming, which means it can remain in perpetuity and can expand on the existing parcel. If we leave it as MS, then it could be converted to other uses that probably are not appropriate for a residential area. We've contacted the owners of these property, or this property, which is Laurel Creek Incorporated, which is a subsidiary of the Development District, and they are not opposed to it being included in this rezoning. So the planning commission has recommended for approval of the rezoning of parcels 6301 and 6302 on tax map 39, and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, any questions or discussion from the council?
It was originally MS because of the facility that was already located there, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do you have any idea when that got changed to MS?
In 2000, when it was annexed, of course, it was unzoned prior to it being annexed. And when it was annexed, it was zoned MS. The whole upper portion there, this eight, or almost nine acres, was zoned MS. They subsequently cut off the lower portion for the assisted living facility.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Mills, the, it's RD, it's going to be, your request is to change it to RD, correct?
That's correct.
And that's, and that's because, and that's considered lower density, that's considered low density?
It's much lower density than MS.
Sure. But that, is there any reason why it would not be, and what is RS?
Well, RS 15 is the nearest zone to this. It's single-family. RD is duplex and single-family. It's 5,000 square feet.
Joining RS, it would be adjoining RS, why not, why not just RS versus RD?
RS 15. Well, there was a lot of discussion at, at the planning commission meeting about this, in that there was a huge tract directly across from this that's already zoned RD. That's contiguous to RS 15. This is a significant downzone from that property. MS allows a lot of uses. This would, the reduction would allow the same density as the directly across the street, but would greatly limit the potential for nonconforming uses or less acceptable uses in this area. So it was felt it was a bit, it was a compromise to the property owners. Would allow them to have a little higher density, nothing that's any greater than directly across the street, but it would be a greater restriction on the property than the MS zone is.
Well, I realize that, I guess, but, but I mean, it is a joint, it is a joint in RS 15, so why not, why not RS 15? That's even, that's even more, it's even lower density.
It is.
And with the quality of life study that came through, that I've read, that a lot of, a lot of comments were made about having lower-density homes and going away from higher density. And so I'm just, I'm just curious why it wasn't, it wasn't?
Well, another reason, another reason is, and let me-
Was it, you said a compromise, was it a-
Well, let me go back, let me go to the aerial photograph, and let it sort of start with this.
Okay.
The same property owners on this, also on this property, which they have currently in the process of developing as a single-family subdivision at RS 15. By doing the RD with an existing multifamily use here, that serves as a transition in terms of use. So it's, you're not going to have solid RS 15. You've got an existing nonconforming use that's going to stay there and can remain there in perpetuity. So it does give you, there is a transition here.
All right. I understand. Thank you for your, your help. Okay, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, ask for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. On to item five. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 101217, amendment to zoning code section 230, which is FL Flood Plane District, to reflect revisions to the flood insurance rate map resulting from a letter of map revision. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, in October of 2010, the Federal Emergency Management Agency issued this letter of map revision, or LOMA, for the Cookville's flood insurance rate maps. And as a result of these revisions, amendments to the zoning code section 230, flood plane district, and our zoning map are required. The change is shown on the map on the screen there on our aerial photograph. This specifically affects panel number 140D, which is dated May 16th, 2007, and it specifically affects Cookville Creek Tributary 2, from approximately 60 feet downstream of North Washington Avenue to just upstream of East 11th Street. The revision reduces the flood hazard boundary in this area, removing eight parcels entirely and decreasing the boundary on two other parcels. The planning commission is recommending for approval of the amendments to zoning code section 230 and the official zoning map reflecting the letter of map revision, and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion in a second?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, discussion from the council?
I have a question. Okay, work with me here, because I-
Sure.
Again, this is, a lot of this is new stuff to me, so I'm trying to kind of get my hands around it, but it sounds like we had this letter that defines our, a new, a new map, and we have, we have to approve this for, for our flood insurance. Am I doing okay so far? Okay. Well, and that new map is now remove, it's removing eight, eight properties from, from that flood plain.
That's correct.
Does this mean that the, those folks are ineligible, or is it a disadvantage, is it a disadvantage to those property owners in obtaining flood insurance?
No. It doesn't matter. Anybody located in a community participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, whether they're in a flood hazard area or not, is eligible to buy flood insurance. By being outside of a flood hazard area, their flood insurance rate, should they choose to buy flood insurance, would be greatly reduced. So this is a great benefit to those property owners. Secondly, if they have a federal loan or a loan backed by the federal government, they're no longer required to buy flood insurance. It becomes an option instead of mandatory. So it's a great benefit to those property owners. To give you a little more background on this, when the, our new maps came out in 2007, the city was completely redone in 2007 by the federal government. This area was identified as a problem area. We just didn't, couldn't believe it had increased this much. And the actual height of the flood at this intersection of Washington 10th would be 16 feet to reach that boundary. And it was, you know, you're talking about NOAA-type floods for that to happen. So we notified them about that, and they've been studying this for at least two years, and we finally got this letter of map revision. We're required to make these amendments to maintain our eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills, is kind of an unrelated question, but somewhat related. All the apartments that are going in back there, will that affect any of the water runoff?
Water runoff?
Yeah.
That's been, when they submitted their plans for approval for construction, drainage plans were required, and those were reviewed and approved by codes and public works.
Just kind of unrelated, but I-
They're required to have on-site retention of their water.
Okay. Any other discussion from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, ask for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Hold a public hearing, item six, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 101218, amendment to the zoning code relating to package store locations. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you know, this past November, a referendum was approved to permit retail package stores to sell alcoholic beverages in the city of Cookville. The sale of alcoholic beverages from retail package stores is currently not addressed in the zoning code. Amendments to the zoning code are necessary to determine appropriate zones and establish any conditions. The planning commission is recommended that the zoning code be amended to include as permitted uses retail package stores for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the neighborhood commercial zone, local commercial, general commercial, regional commercial, and planned commercial zoning districts, provided that they are located on streets of at least major collector status as identified in our 2030 Plan and subject to compliance with the applicable provisions of Title 8 of the Cookville Municipal Code. Also, as you know, as we've had in many of our discussions, the sale of retail alcohol, or the retail sale of alcoholic beverages is regulated by the Tennessee Code. There are very detailed regulations. The applicable visions of the Tennessee Code are to be included in the amendments to Title 8 of the Cookville Municipal Code, which will be considered by the council in the very near fu, in very near future. When the planning commission developed their recommendations for appropriate zones for retail package stores, they were under the impression that the total number of package stores would be limited to approximately four locations. The planning commission was also informed that if there were to be any specific site limitations for package stores, such as separation from particular uses and signage restrictions, they would be determined by the city council through amendments to Title 8 of the municipal code. This is a map that depicts the zones recommended by the planning commission for inclusion with package stores. I've got some more detailed blowups of these, if we have any specific discussions. This is the northwestern section of the city, and all these areas would be permitted for package store locations. The dark blue lines depict the major collector or greater street classifications. And here's the southern section of the city, and I believe I've got one in the center section of the city. In the opinion of the planning department, the planning commission felt the restriction on the number of locations would minimize the potential, or potential and/or perceived negative impact between package stores and other uses such as churches, schools, and residential areas. And for that reason, the recommendation was to allow package stores in all commercial zones with the exception of the central business district. The primary reasons mentioned for excluding the central business district were traffic and parking. Now, assuming that, that it's now been determined that the number of package stores will not be limited, the planning department would recommend that the planning commission's recommendation be modified to remove commercial neighborhood district as a zone in which package stores may be permitted.
Mr. Mills, why, why do you recommend removing the commercial neighborhood from there?
Again, when the planning commission reviewed this, the understanding was there would only be four package stores. And it was felt, of course, we had no guarantee of this, but the general consensus was, then we will probably have a package store on 10th Street, we'd probably have a package store somewhere on Interstate Drive, one on, one on Willow, and one on Jefferson. Just four, that would probably be how they'd be divided somehow. And because of that, we felt there should be no restriction on, very little restrictions on the zones. There were thought, there are areas on 10th Street which would probably be, would probably be appropriate locations for package stores, and that was again, a reason why the neighborhood commercial was left in there.
Are there, are there other areas, though, on 10th Street, if you, if you did remove the commercial neighborhood, are there other areas on 10th Street that would be appropriate?
Yes, there's several areas of local commercial on 10th Street. Let me, if I can go back to that one. This would include, let me go, I've got another map in here that has the local commercial, neighborhood commercial removed. This area along 10th Street is local commercial.
It's local commercial?
Yes, and that's one of the zones that's been recommended by the planning commission.
This is, this is-
And you can see on, on Washington, this is an area that would be local commercial. This area in here, I can go back to other maps, is in neighborhood commercial. Let me go back to that real quick. That's sort of the south end of it right there. Well, this area would come out.
Yeah, see, we just, see all this whole area, this would, that's- So just to clarify, your, your recommendation is to?
Is to, is to approve the zone submitted by the planning commission with exclusion of neighborhood commercial.
Okay.
I believe that by excluding neighborhood commercial, you're going to minimize the potential, and it's, a lot of this is perceived, but, you know, perception, I think, is probably as important in a use like this. But I think it would reduce that potential impact. Now, if, if, again, I believe if it's determined that there is a need for that, we can always go back and amend this and include that zone.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval in a second?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendation, but putting in the commercial neighborhood.
So you're just making a motion to approve?
Everything that they say, but also include commercial neighborhood in, in the zoning.
Well, that will be the planning commission's recommend, that was the planning commission's recommendation.
I thought they were taking it out.
No. That's my, my recommendation.
That's my motion then.
Okay.
My recommendation, my motion is your recommendation.
Which is to remove neighborhood commercial?
Is to remove.
No, I don't want to remove neighborhood commercial. That's why I'm saying I approve of, I would like the motion to have everything that he says except for add-back neighborhood commercial.
That's exactly how the planning commission recommended it.
Okay.
That's why the order says before.
The original.
All right, we have the motion. Do we have a second?
Well, I believe it failed. So I believe we need another motion.
All right, let's try this again.
I'll make, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the, not the original planning commission motion, but the, your, your motion that you presented just a moment ago, which was to-
Mr. Mills.
Which was to, to strike, remove commercial neighborhood.
Okay, so a motion's on, on the floor to exclude commercial neighborhood.
I second.
But all of the zones. Second, okay, second. Any discussion from the council?
Certainly, this issue has been, we've done a lot of study, a lot of people have been doing study, Mr. Mills, Mr. Raider, Mr. Shipley, and one of the nice things about the way our government is set up, that as time goes by, and we see that we need things we can add in, we can take out, so even though my motion failed, I'm going to vote yes on this, and, because certainly in six months, a year, we might have to look at it and change it again.
That's a good, good point. Councilman? We, this is a, council person, this is, this is, you know, we have to remember, this is kind of a work in progress.
Yeah.
This is territory we've never trod before, so we'll, we need a little bit of patience, and we're going to try to do our best to make sure we get it right. So that's kind of why, that's one of, one of the reasons why I'm going to, you know, I was bantering this back and forth myself. This is one of the reasons why I'm going to vote for the more restrictive per, per the recommendation of Mr. Mills, because we can, it probably, you said it's easier, a little easier to go more restrictive and then to add on as we go.
I believe it would be, of course, this is my opinion, but it would be, I think it's better to start off more restrictive, and then if we find out that we're too restrictive to ease up, then if we start out wide open and think, oh, we've made a mistake, it's too late then, they're, they're there.
Very good, okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion from the council? Any discussion from the audience? All right, seeing none, call for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, item seven, consider reappointment to the Cookville Municipal Planning Commission. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the term of Chris Wakefield for service on the planning commission has expired. The members of the planning commission are appointed by the city council for five-year terms. The planning department would recommend for reappointment of Mr. Wakefield. He's been contacted and has agreed to continue to serve if you reappoint him.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion in a second?
Some moved.
All right, any discussion from the council? You said he's been contacted. Do you ever appoint, you ever appoint anybody that you don't contact?
I don't, too.
Probably a good thing.
There were some few problems with that years ago, so we're trying to make sure they want to be on there before we-
And certainly, we're grateful when people agree to help us with these things, and the planning department, the planning commission certainly puts in their time.
They sure do.
And we appreciate everybody who serves and willing to, willing to serve.
Had a chance to serve with Chris on the planning commission for a while, and he's doing a great job and wants to be there, so that's a, that's a lot of it, if you want, you want to be there, so.
Win-win.
That's a big plus.
Uh, any, any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item eight, consider reappointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, we have two members on the BZA whose terms have expired, Tracy Cody and Sid Gilbert. Members of the BZA served three-year terms and are appointed by the council. Both gentlemen have been contacted and have agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, and we would recommend for the reappointment.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion, council, audience?
Once again, happy to have people serve and glad that they're willing to, and anybody who ever feels so, a desire to serve, you ought to contact us and let us know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item nine, consider reappointment to the Historic Zoning Commission. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the terms of Lee Carney and Kathy Lamb for service on the Historic Zoning Commission have expired. Members of the Historic Zoning Commission are appointed by the mayor with confirmation by the city council, and they serve five-year terms. Both of these members have been contacted and have agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, and we would recommend for the reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion from council?
Well, now I feel like I need to thank them again, because we don't want to leave anybody out, and I think the Historic Zoning Board is interesting because it's people from the neighborhoods or from the actual zone serving on that, and there's a real investment in that, so.
That's right.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
All right, on to item 10. Consider appointment to the Alcohol and Beverage Control Board. Sponsor is Ms. Kathy McLean.
Mayor and city council, we have a vacancy. The term of David Storm has expired, and Matt Fair, I've contacted him, and he's willing to serve, and I recommend his appointment.
Thank you. Do we have an approval?
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right. Discussion from the council?
I've known Matt for a long time, and he'd be a great addition. I'm glad he stepped forth to contribute.
Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item 11. Consider awarding cleaning services bid from Water Quality Control Department. Sponsor, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we've received an open bids for cleaning, cleaning at our facility down on South Jefferson. We've received bids. A&amp;M Cleaning was the low bidder, $1,350 a month, and we'd recommend the low bidder.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the council?
Mr. Kelly. I noticed that there's another company that bid the same amount. Was there a reason why you selected one over the other?
We asked them to submit the number of man-hours they would use every month, and this one had more man-hours.
Oh, okay.
And I talked to the other, the other gentleman. He's, he's worked for us before, and he was, he was fine with it.
Okay.
That was my question.
Any other discussion? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
All right, this is the portion of the meeting where we open the floor to citizens and/or delegations to come up and, and discuss anything that is on their mind, anything they want, anything they want to. All we ask is you come up to the podium, announce your name, and keep it to three minutes or around that time, if you can. So if there, anyone would like to come forward? All right.
Motion adjourned.
Any, any discussion from the council? Any, any comments? Any, anything going on in the community we need to discuss?
I think we're doing a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
But it's all been good, and it's, it was great, our work session this past Monday to have so many interested citizens to be here to help us discuss all these issues. So it's always good to have people in the audience.
It is, it is. Hope we have that many next work session, because, you know, like we said, we're, we're learning how to do the, the package store as we, as we move along, kind of studying other cities and towns and counties and how they've done things, and try to, we're trying to do this the right way as well, so bear with us and have some patience, because we're, we're learning too, so, but we welcome all comments and all, all opinions. We do like to hear from you.